We will go ahead and get this meeting started, special council meeting tonight, Monday, January 8th. We will stand with a small prayer and pledge allegiance. Grace and Sunday Father, we come to you today and just ask you for guidance and direction and just wisdom. We ask you to be with us through this time, and we ask you to watch over the council, the staff, the village of Hicksville through our decisions and our counsel and everything that we do for this community. We thank you in all you do, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cheryl, I got roll call, please.
Here.
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 All right. I want to thank everybody for coming. This was called a special council meeting tonight. I know the past couple of weeks with the situation with the EMS department and everybody, if you can't hear me, I can talk louder, but a lot of meetings have taken place, a lot of discussion has taken place with committees, with individuals. Rachel's been a big part of this and along with the committees and the EMS department. I appreciate that. So at this time, I know with the special council meeting, we wanted to direct things to move forward. I know that currently the EMS, they've announced that they are currently running. There's still more questions being asked about why's and what fours, but at the same time, I wanted to let people know that we're doing our due diligence and finding out, you know, questions and answers and asking those. At the same time, I want to thank everybody who's been a part of getting the EMS up and running. Again, I know there's been a lot of questions and direction with departments and consortium and things to get us up and going. And I want to thank everybody for taking part of that, being patient with that and getting through that. So at this point, I will open it up to questions, concerns, direction.
I guess the big thing is my questions have been from the very beginning. I know I sent a lot of questions today to Cheryl, asking, you know, some of the timeline and I went down through all the emails that EMTs have given us or maybe Chief, you give us for a list of timeline of when all this stuff took place, when an email was sent to, from Mercy Hospital to Hicksville, questions that they asked, answers that were given to them back in February, contract sent to, back to us in February 9th, February 13th, pricing given to us, and then payment not being made. So try and figure out who is responsible for that. I mean, who's responsible for making sure that we have a medical director? Is that written? Is anyone's job responsibility? Is that EMS law? Is that, where does that fall? Who's responsible? I know, I'm trying to think of different scenarios. I know I put them down here in the last part of mine, because I know, you know, for instance, you go off to Magpies, you go to Two Bandits, and you go there and you order food, you need to order drinks, alcohol, whatever, and your waitress or waiter comes to your table and waits on you. They give you a bill. They take your money. They give you your change and you leave. It's not the bartender that I really personally coming in there to know whether or not they have a food license. They don't know if they have a liquor license with, you know, high division liquor control. They don't know if they have that. They just come in and they do their job. Like our EMTs, our administrative assistant, they come in and do their daily job, do what they're supposed to do, unknowingly, by the sounds of it, unless somebody can show me something differently, unknowingly, that we were working without a current contract. So I know there's been a lot of talk about fraud. There's been talk about people not doing their right job and people being suspended. I just trying to figure out where all this information is because, you know, same thing, you go to the Eagles, you buy lottery tickets or you buy gambling tickets and drinks there. It's not the bartender's responsibility to know if we have a liquor license up to date, if we have an Ohio Bingo license up to date. It's up to the head person, the trustees, the secretary to pay those. Cheryl's job as a fiscal officer, in my eyes, I mean, I'm a department head at the school. I have to get a requisition turned in. I got to get a purchase order, and I can't spend anything until I got a purchase order. It's not her job to make sure the licenses are kept up to date. It is her job when I turn in an invoice for her to pay them. But same thing, and Corey's not here tonight. I wish she was, or even Denny, he would know. But I'm sure they have licenses for the sewer plant, the water plant, police department. I know you have like Axon and stuff you want to have yearly maintenance contracts and stuff on. That is up to the department head, not the individual police officers or his street and water guys. I mean, it's stuff Corey has to do. So I'm just trying to figure out where the ball got dropped. Those are my, all my questions. Is it in a, I don't know what was done in the past. I know timing wise, Kramer left in, I think it says March. When he left, all these emails took place in February. Bruce, you became interim in March. You became full-time fire and EMS chief May 15th. So just trying to figure out who should have known. Things I see online, I was doing a lot of Googling, was showing that the fire chief has the responsibility of having the medical director, even if an EMS chief is hired, if there's an EMS chief in place, it's still the fire chief's responsibility to make sure the medical director of record.
Was this contract and bill forwarded to the fire chief?
No, it wasn't.
I don't know.
That's the question.
I know, that's what I'm saying here.
There's no record of Kramer or Hart ever receiving a copy of that contract.
But even getting a contract, the fire chief is still responsible knowing that you have to have a contract in place and keep somebody.
Not if he just took over.
But they did know.
Kramer, I mean.
But it's my understanding, they did have somebody, so they, they didn't know that they didn't have somebody, correct? They, who's the mayor, gee?
Bruce.
You, you had somebody. You didn't know that you no longer had somebody, correct?
Correct.
So nobody told you, you no longer had somebody?
Correct.
So whose responsibility was it? Who got, who got the email that said, you no longer have somebody, you need to sign this contract and pay the bill? So Cheryl, I know that we've kind of been talking to you, trying to figure that out. And I know that that kind of got brought up in an email. And you said that you were looking into it and you had found some information. Can you kind of paint a timeline for us, what that looks like? I know we kind of received.
I'll put it in writing to everybody.
Right. I didn't know, like, it's a lot of information, so I didn't.
I'll read it. So it's all out there. So one of the questions I had was, since we had a medical director on record for years, by the sounds of it, who did all the communicating in the past? Who obtained the yearly contract? Who signed the yearly contract? Who submitted the yearly contract to the fiscal officer for payment? Who returned the signed contract back to Mercy NWO EMS in the past years? Cheryl's responsible when the pharmacy license needs renewed is done online. I make the payment, wait for the actual license. That is the pharmacy part of it. Put in the mailbox for the chief to get a signature from the medical director. That is not my responsibility. Since COVID, we can do business by email, including electronic signatures. I send the responsible party paperwork to Dr. Newmeyer's office instead of putting it in the mailbox here, because we were in the process of switching chiefs. Dr. Newmeyer sent it back and said he was no longer medical director. That was the first time she heard that. He said to contact her Dr. Aminet as she was taking his place. I sent it to her office and got the email, but not from her, but from NWO EMS with a contract for someplace in New Jersey. The first one I have ever personally seen. I have, I had the mayor sign it and put it in the mailbox. I did not hand it in person to anyone or take it all the way to the finish line. I waited for the second signature, which is theirs, and the invoice to follow. See the contract. Yes, the May email asking if we went a different way should have been a giant red flag, and Cheryl takes part of the blame for that. Put the blame on me and put a display reaction in my file. I'll even write it. I've been handholding, whistleblowing, screaming about the stuff going on, crap going on over there for months and years. I followed all the channels properly. I went to PFE meetings, which I haven't been on PFE for a while, so I don't know which, if you guys have talked about this in PFE meetings?
It's not contracts. We would talk about budgeting, spending.
Well, we talked about contracts and her frustrations with contracts not being written correctly. That was something that was discussed, absolutely.
It says, were all the EMTs in their focus, where was all their focus then? It was not in secret. That's their motive, not mine. The end result was the chief resigned. He was not reprimanded or anything, and some stuff will be reported to state auditors when they come this year. Not in secret, right out in your face, which is how ideal stuff. If I hear my name linked with words, I'm going to hear fraud and there would be hell pay.
So I will say, when I joined Police Fire EMS would have been the beginning of 2023, so January 2023, I think was when I started. The previous Chief Kramer was saying that he was doing things like training records. We had asked him to give us training records. We never had any. There was a lot of talk, and it all sounded good, but I know that she had frustrations getting stuff from him. So I don't know, did any, were any of you aware of this? That when you guys did training, did you ever have certificates that were handed to you? Or like, where's the paper trail on this?
That would be fire, that Kramer didn't do anything to EMS.
Was he supposed to be doing anything with EMS that we?
Would have been nice.
Well, he was technically the chief at the time, the chief of fire and EMS. That was part of his job description at the time.
Did they like question him while he did?
There was definitely questions in the meetings, yes.
I did some training for EMS, just because we didn't have any.
Was there any documentation on anything?
Of those trainings, of my training, yes. I documented my trainings.
Okay. Did you turn them into anybody or did you just keep them?
They're in a folder somewhere in there.
Okay.
I believe I turned them into John. I think that was way back when, but.
That's one thing I've noticed since I've started.
We do fire training every, every, every month.
Yeah. I mean, this is like a systemic.
We document that.
This is a systemic problem. What I've noticed coming on council is documentation of disciplinary documentation of things we're supposed to, I mean, all this stuff is supposed to be accessible, and it's not. So it's a huge issue. Could it have been prevented if we had documentation of certain things? I don't know. Maybe. I mean, right now, it's just like, we had to go into crisis mode and everybody was running around with their head cut off trying to get things solved. And now that we're out of crisis mode, the EMS is running again. Sorry, we literally did not have our heads cut off, but you know what I'm saying. I mean, it's just like, where's the, where is all this stuff? Why hasn't this been happening for years? That's my opinion of it.
I guess my question still is, is who did this contract get forwarded onto? Like, it doesn't sound like it went anywhere. It just kind of died.
It didn't get forwarded onto anybody.
And I could speak a little bit, being on the council side of stuff for a number of years. It's rare that the council would ever hear about any type of contracts, any way, shape, or form within all department levels. You know, we would always assume, I'm not, probably not blame us, but we would assume that everybody's doing their due diligence in getting contracts signed, protocol done.
We're talking about the contracts. Are you talking about the contracts between the townships and the village for providing services?
Well, I'll be honest, this year I actually helped more because it was in that transition between Bruce and John and myself. So I went to two meetings to help Bruce. He couldn't go to a couple. I was Police Fire Chair, and I said, what can I do, being the chair, to help you get these new contracts out? Because we, you know, we were talking about, we asked increases for coverage. We had a township ask us for increase in coverage area, and I said, that's up to you guys. You and John, you know, John and Bruce talked about it, said, can we or can we not? But then I told, we told them ahead of time, we were having increases. Now, because of transition, Cheryl had copies of those from the past. It's, you know, past chiefs would write them up, but this time Cheryl wrote them up, and then we delivered them. And everybody was good with them. We'd have any problems. Everything was very copesthetic.
And all council had access to those contracts.
Yeah. Police and fire were part of those too. I mean, the committee itself, and then we presented them. So those kind of things. I mean, with the township, yes. But the other, like internal protocol, EP, anything with water, sewer, all that kind of stuff, it's not something, I mean, Kent was a member, I'm not, you know, but they never brought any of that kind of stuff to council.
I guess my question is, who knew that they needed a new medical director? And where did the ball fall? Who dropped the ball?
It's a great question.
Who knew?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Because we've asked, I know, like John, who's a former EMS chief, and Bruce, still covers.
He's on here.
He was a former EMS chief. We asked that last time. I mean, is that something that former, an EMS chief would know? I don't know.
Every EMT, day one.
Somebody signs that a medical director is responsible. You don't just, I'm a former, I mean, I'm a retired, all right. As an EMT, as an advanced EMT, you know you just don't run on your own.
Day one.
That a doctor signs for you. You know that.
Chapter one.
But you might.
But they're all running assuming that it's up to date.
Correct.
It's not actually checks and balances, checking to see if we have one. Whose job is that?
Does somebody throw in the waste can and just go on?
Yes, okay. So we got an email saying, you need to sign this contract. You need to pay the bill. Who didn't pay the bill or sign the contract?
Cheryl says in that same one I just read, it says, I sent it to her office, which was Dr. Aminet, and got the email, not from her, but from NWO EMS, with a contract for someplace in New Jersey. I had the mayor sign it, which would have been Mayor Jones at the time, not Bart, and put it in the mailbox. I'm not sure what mailbox you mean by that. Like, the mailbox to send it to them or mailbox for somebody?
Fire EMS mailbox.
So you put it in the fire EMS mailbox. I did not hand it in to person, to anyone in person, or take it anywhere, all the way to the finish line. I waited for the second signature, theirs, and invoice to follow. So she put it in the fire EMS.
Mailbox.
Mailbox.
For them to sign it and then give it back to you, right? Is that, okay? And I checked with them and they said.
Who's them?
The company. But when they had both signatures, they would invoice.
Okay, when you say you put it in the fire EMS mailbox, who typically opens up that? And who would normally hit the signature?
It's not specific. It's just sitting back there, everybody's mailbox.
But who, who, who did you speak to from Northwest Ohio EMS? Because you don't speak to any of the doctors. You speak to Robert.
Daleo.
And he said that he did not speak to anyone from his department.
Emails back and forth between her and Daleo.
Yes, but it was only the emails present. There was no, there was nothing else. He never received any contact.
I didn't talk to Robert.
Because he said he has to document all of that. So I'm confused as to where this conversation is coming from.
Cheryl, I know in the past, we have gone with consortium. Would you have to sign a contract every year for it then? So this was a new process? Totally new to me. Yep. And that's kind of how I understood it. It was a new process that came with a $5,000, or close to $5,000 fee with it.
You got questions back here, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So going forward, because we are where we are, right? Going forward, it sounds like there's a systemic issue on documentation. You guys have both mentioned this, right? Documentation, it sounds like accreditation, documentation. So one of the things, because I run into that, run into the plant of safety, forklift records, all that type of stuff, right? So there's a lot of management software. And I just did a quick look. There's management software for fire departments and EMSs to keep up with all your, what's all your requirements are, all of your training records, any of your stuff there to have, everything electronically there that you can easily audit, that you can easily manage, know what's coming up, what needs to be done. I think going forward, I think that might be something that somebody needs to look into, which of those different types of suites might be advantageous for a community of our size to actually put together some kind of a structure. Because it sounds like maybe there's some structure that needs to be generated and created instead of, like at my plant, I had a lot of non-terrible people, retired, and our big thing was our whole tribal knowledge. People just knew it. They leave, and then no one else knows what the heck is going on at their feet, right? And so I think, yeah, we are where we are. This sucks, but I think we've got, we got to be like, what's our, what's our plan going forward? So I just wanted to, looking, it looks like there's plenty of software, like we use for safety and stuff at the factory, that can do the same type of thing. All of your documentation, all of your, whatever permit you need, and manage all of your permits, just like you would if you're running a factory.
And let me ask, you guys being so involved in that, Bruce, I mean, do we have that software now? Do, is that what the Northwest Ohio, is it, and I heard, I was talking to the other chief, Chief Denning, do we have Lexipol to kind of help us keep in protocol? Because I think he had mentioned that to me. I mean, do we have that?
We had Lexipol, but we, Kramer did not renew it.
Because that's what helps us keep it in compliance. So.
Kramer got rid of Lexipol in favor of some other training program.
What was it, that training program?
I have no idea.
How did he get rid of Lexipol?
Last year, beginning of the year.
Which is when he was resigned?
Yeah, sure. I, I don't know. I just, this, it's hearsay. This is just stuff that he had told me, you know, we're going to get away from Lexipol, and we're going to do all of our training on this fancy online training program. We had a meeting at the end of the year, not last year, but the year before. We had a meeting, and he talked about that. I'm sorry?
That was actually discussed, and I remember him discussing that.
Yeah. You were in that, because you were on last.
But then he was gone. So I don't know. We might have even paid for that training program and never even used it. Because I, I don't know.
It's within the realm of possibility.
Yeah. Because Kramer had a very bad habit of just not sharing any information with anybody but Kramer. So.
I think.
Just a little.
You guys work with him all the time.
Yeah. Worked for him.
And I mean, I know last meeting we had, I know Tony said something about having an EMS chief, given some of those duties, responsibilities, job write-ups. I mean, like, when I say job write-up, like, certain jobs that they're supposed to handle or take care of. I don't know if you've thought about that, or.
Oh, yeah. I've thought about it.
You know, job description for employees. I mean.
I kind of stopped at the point where, are we going to hire an actual EMS chief? Or is that person, you just want to have a liaison between me, him, and you?
Well, I think you've got to decide that within your own department.
Exactly.
And then present it to personnel and.
Right. With my personnel, I don't have a second division where I can go to and check on that. I relied on John to have that for me. And that's about as far as I can go right at the moment. I can't, unless you want me to have an EMT chief.
Well, is EMS your forte? I mean, is that your background?
No, EMS.
Well, then I would highly recommend, if that wasn't my forte, to have somebody that is. That is her forte.
Sure.
I mean, I know there's social media posts. I don't have social media, but people like taking screenshots and sending them to people. And there's comments on there about who's second in command for things like this, and responses are coming from your wife about, Chief Hart was still in charge, rectifying the situation. He doesn't need anyone to take over for him. I mean.
That's my wife.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean, there's other people asking, why isn't there somebody second in charge?
Well, there's kind of was, Tom.
Well, he was not an EMS chief. He was demoted. He was administrative assistant, and he got paid only a dollar an hour extra on top of his normal job duties for billing only.
Which is the amount that he made as chief as well.
No.
This is what's happening?
That's the amount he made as chief as well.
Okay. Well, he was demoted and.
He was, a title was taken away from him, but he had all the same responsibility.
Yeah.
I mean, does anybody else, any other?
Yes. Mr. Kimmer? Yes, Brian Kimmer. I'm from the township. You guys have contracts with the two townships. I have a long history with the Hicksville Fire Department, the Police Department. My grandfather was chief, or great-grandfather was chief in 1909 to 1942. My grandfather was on this department. My uncle was on this department. I run for farmer township, because Hicksville wouldn't let me on at that time, because I live too far out of town. I want to know, the failure to tell your townships, your contract people, that all of this was going on. We never got an official notice until 7:59 Friday night from my chief that this was going on. I had to tell my chief this was going on. I had to tell my township trustees this was going on. This is a failure of the council, number one, for not living up to the contracts of your townships. Who communicates to them that this was going on? Nobody did. But those were contracts that you had to fulfill. As a fireman, half of our fire district is covered by Hicksville. I'm the first person to an accident or an EMS run on this side of the township. And I call for mutual aid, or I call for what's going on. I have constant radio contact with the EMS coming out there. I did not know this was going on. We should have. There should have been communications. And it sounds like all the way around in this, there has been no communications from council, from the fire chief who is responsible for this department. Everybody's pushing blame back to Kramer. I didn't care for him as a chief either. But this falls back to the responsibility. It's been eight months, or six months, or whatever it's been that Bruce has been on here. He is responsible. Then the last question and comment I'm going to make is, Defiance City just got rid of their aerial unit for getting a new one. They can't sell their old one to another municipality to run as a tower unit because of safety concerns. You have a tower setting over here. Does it meet NFPA standards? If it doesn't, get it out of service. That's all I really have to say.
I appreciate.
You got questions to make?
I appreciate it. I was, I was told that everyone was notified.
Nope, not until, not until I made the first phone call.
I probably found out about the same time you did on Friday night, and my text message at 9:10 Saturday morning was, are we going to get something out to post to the public to everyone? We need to get this explained.
And when you posted it to the public, you didn't post it to, all you did was city people. You didn't.
Yeah.
You did not.
I was told, I was told everyone else was already informed.
No.
And that they've been, they've worked, they're working with all the other ones that notified them of where, who's going to be covering them until we're back up and running, is what I was told.
Not to, I've got it right here on my text messages from Murph. I am responding. We did not get it until 7:59 Friday night.
That'd be a Bruce question. Why wasn't our others notified?
You're not saying this last Friday. You were saying the Friday prior.
Friday, the prior.
Before New Year's.
Hey, you guys had already been served notice on Wednesday of this. Why did it take?
December 29th.
Excuse me?
December 29th.
December 29th.
Yep.
You know, why did we not know until 7:59 on Friday, that Friday night, that we were going to be covered by Sherwood? If we would have had an emergency in our township, who was I to call?
Hicksville.
It's got a lot longer wait time.
No, I mean, but if a call went in to Defiance.
But I did not know that.
They are the ones that sent it. They are the ones that sent, the call, the call was the same. That didn't change.
But they wanted to know if it was, they were coming from Sherwood or any other department that we had coming into our coverage. They needed to tell their people, it's going to take longer to get here than normal Hicksville.
Because if it did, I would have called Williams County. I can make that call. If it's bad enough and I can't get Sherwood here for 20 minutes, my next call is to get Williams County coming. You put the community outside of Hicksville even in more jeopardy by not communicating any of this until later on and keeping it under wraps. Our representative, Klaufenstein's office, did not know about this until after it was going on. Because I did contact his office and let him know Friday morning that this was going on. Bruce?
I mean, we're so tied up in trying to get coverage.
You, they just said you already had coverage. So what do you, why were you trying to get coverage and you already had coverage? That, you're going back and forth there.
Because we couldn't run. We were on the phones. We were on texting of trying to get Sherwood to cover our territory.
You just, you guys just heard the wish-washing about that. He's saying he's trying to get Sherwood to run, but this is Friday. This is two days after everything happened. We should have been notified. You're telling me you were still trying to get Sherwood to run for you. Stick with one story, please.
I agree with you. You absolutely should have been notified. I understand your frustration. You got to understand, this was an unprecedented event that we were trying to work through. And to say that there wasn't conversations, I can guarantee and promise you, there were hours of conversations that were taking place with multiple people on phones to multiple different people. We were doing the best we could to make sure that not only our community, but outside community was, was safe. We really were. And you have to trust that process. I know that it looks like it's wishy-washy. I understand that there's definitely a communication breakdown that we can work on. And moving forward, trust me, there's going to be some big changes. We need something, some sort of policy so that this never happens again. We need some sort of accountability so that we can keep track of this. And, and this isn't the way you want to learn, right? You don't want to learn because a big mistake was made and a ball was dropped. But I promise you, people were making big conversations and hours on end. This was not, no one was meant, like, we were trying to keep everyone in the dark. That's not what was here. They were literally just trying to process the information and figure out where to go next. And maybe they missed the ball by not contacting outside people. And maybe you could have been a great resource of information. And we know that now. We know that, hey, maybe we should contact those outside people. Maybe they could have helped us kind of work through this. It just wasn't something we had dealt with before. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know.
I know that Thursday, prior to that, you knowing, Wednesday night, I got called in, they asked me to come in Wednesday night to talk about the situation with Abby and Bruce and Stacy. And I said, Thursday morning, you got to find out what we can do, how we can do it, where we, where we need to go. And I said, first thing Wednesday, Thursday morning. how we can do it, where we, where we need to go. And I said, first thing Wednesday, Thursday morning, move that direction. That was my advice to them. From that point in time, they decided, you know, if we could run, could they run? And then, who could cover for them and calling the other departments? Thursday, conversations were back and forth. I don't want to keep pounding them to see if they were getting going, but then we were also talking to the consortium, the other mayor was involved. Like you said, there's a lot of people involved. New, you know, we're double-checking the contracts and any protocol we could get up to see if we could keep running. Thursday and Friday, that was going on big time. And again, I apologize. You should have been notified. I agree.
You ran the farm, right?
Chris.
So if you would have radioed for Hicksville EMS, dispatch already knew that Hicksville EMS was not running. So they would have told you, so you would have known.
Yeah.
Because it was...
A nice note front.
I know.
Part of our, you know.
No, I get it.
Guys were talking about this company. Our company's motto is trust, communication, and respect. We got none of that.
No, I get it, but like, you would have known, but at that moment is when you would have known. You, nice note front.
Have you ran for the fire service?
Yes.
Okay. Have you been to some of that accidents where you need information immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Then you know where I'm coming from. If I can't, if I know Sherwood, or if I have heard Sherwood's out on a run, I'm calling for Hicksville. Come and get it. You know, I need help getting here.
I think we all understand, and we beat that horse about long enough. Let's try to find a way to move on and not... We know that, we know things was wrong. We know things didn't work out the way that they should have. We're trying to fix them, not talk about them, and what can we do to fix them?
But Ryan, I've talked to you about other issues.
Yep.
And those were never addressed. I was asked, I asked to come and speak to council about that situation, and was never, and I've talked to you too. I was never once, I was told I was gonna be called in here to talk to them. Not once did you people ask me my opinion or bring me in and talk about that situation. Not once.
So when you say you people, like, I had no idea about any of those.
Those two right there, I talked to after the incident.
Well, but it's...
That was a major incident.
Yeah.
That was handled wrong. Could have gotten firemen hurt.
Yeah, I know the seriousness of it.
Okay.
I mean, I was, I was one of the ones that was advocating for getting it out on hyperreached. I admit, I was not thinking about the township at the time. I was thinking about hyperreach. I didn't know if hyperreach, who the hyperreach was gonna go to. We don't have a Village of Hicksville Facebook page. If it were me, we would, and we put it on Facebook, because everybody knows how much time people spend on Facebook. The hyperreach, how many people do we have signed up for it? Couple hundred, last I heard? I mean, like, I think we need a Facebook page, and we need it so we can communicate to the masses as quickly as possible. Now, is there anything keeping us from having a Facebook page?
Does the police department have a Facebook page?
They do, but...
Yeah, they do.
We do.
I don't know if anything was put out there. I don't...
You've had your arm up in the air for now.
So, yeah, so I have two things. Just wanted to let everyone know, here on the public, if you could please go up to the mic into the podium to speak, so everyone watching on TV could hear you, that'd be great. Also, just going off, if any of the councilmen have something they would like to share to the Hicks TV Facebook page, which obviously, you know, we're just through you guys as well, we can share that. It just has to be an official statement that we can quote from any of you. So we have an email. You guys can email me, and I could type it up, and I would share it, share it to Bill, and Bill would approve it. We would just have to make sure it's an official statement from the village council, and then we could share it on ours. If that would help you guys out with just getting information out there.
I guess with Facebook, we've talked about protocol. You know, Cheryl's brought that to our attention. We don't do a, we're really not allowed to do a lot of Facebook posting. I mean, we might have an opinion, or a concept, or an idea about stuff, but I'm just saying...
These are public service announcements. It's like, all you do is you post something, you turn off comments, and put it out.
Well, and it might, I know the county commissioners have one, so maybe we can look into what, how they run theirs, and what that looks like. And Rachel, I'm sure that you could be a part of that. What would protect us and keep us safe, if that was a direction we decided to go?
Okay, and just in reference to you saying, I don't know if the Hicksville Police Department put anything out there. I guess they did on the 30th, but it kind of sounds like you're throwing the police department under the bus here.
No, I know.
But that's how, that's how it just came across.
No, I'm just saying, they reached out to the public.
No, it's not, but that's how it just came across.
What?
Okay.
That's not what I meant when Charlie was saying we don't have a Facebook.
But that's, just, that's how it just came across.
Well, but I just meant, they post messages, that's one.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just letting you know how it came across. It's not, that's not how it just came across to me. It's just how it came across to several people.
I got, I got one more question that really bothers me. The conversation that you guys were having about contracts and billing and people signing off on things, and that nobody is the city administrator signing off on this stuff? Who signs the, the purchase order for this contract?
When I asked that, it was supposed to be the chief and the mayor signing off on it.
They have, both of them have authority to sign off on it, on money to be spent by city.
When Robert DeLeone said, when Robert DeLeone asked the questions, one of the questions...
Specifically their department, is that what you mean?
Well, just anybody.
Or contracts in general?
Contracts in general, any purchase orders in general. Should that not be going through?
Yeah, that tends to department.
Department head, like, if it's, if it's street, it's, it'd be Corey Administrator, but if it's something for fire EMS, it would be Bruce. It'd be the fire chief.
But the question is, we don't know that it got anywhere.
Well, I understand, but it sounded like to me that they...
That was one of Robert's...
...in the system to sign off on purchase orders.
Yeah, Mercy asked that in February, asked, who would be signing off on this contract, and it was stated, the mayor would sign off on it.
How long are they good for? Like, is this a contract that needs to be renewed every 12 months? Are they good for 24 months? Are they good for five years?
I've never seen the contract.
I've never either. I don't know.
It made it sound, it made it sound like the one was, looked like we were ready for our yearly contract. Or it's time for, it's, I guess it says that it's time for us to renew our license.
So 12 months? Do we not have some type of check and balance, or maybe we look at putting in a check and balance at the beginning of the year, regardless if we have some type of personnel change shortly thereafter that we go through and we review, like, yes, we do have this on file, we've got this all buttoned up? If we don't have, what does that look like moving forward?
That we need to have multiple signatures on this, and it needs to be shared amongst all of council.
Mm-hmm. Right, that's what they were discussing about, the different software.
Software.
Do we audit our, in our departments, do we form an audit team? And then do we cross audit the departments in our township to make sure that these sort of things are being handled, and they're being handled correctly, and signatures are where signatures are supposed to be?
I will say that as medical director, I'm not speaking for you guys, but you guys know a lot more about this than me, but by the sounds of it, the medical director on record for years has never came to Hicksville to do anything. They're the medical director, and when it comes to the drugs and medicine that they give out, they've never really come on site or wrote to EMS. It sounds like the new doctor is supposed to be coming here quarterly, three, four times a year maybe, and even plans on writing to EMS sometimes.
Sure.
And so, that would be a lot better for communication-wise, and be able to make sure you're up to date on stuff. We don't see somebody for years and years and years. I'm not saying you forget, but...
Right.
I mean, every single, I mean, I know I have certain things that I gotta do every year, you know? I gotta have a fire marshal in the building once a year, and I gotta make sure I have a passed inspection, or I gotta make sure it passes. But that's my responsibility. It's nobody else's. This needs to be somebody's responsibility, that it's on their plate every year to make sure that's up to date.
I think we need people holding them accountable. Like, I hold my team accountable. We've got teams that cross-check to make sure, you know, the cranes are working appropriately, just not the guys that run them every day, or that things are being signed off on, documents are being uploaded with signatures and dates accordingly.
Well, one thing I know that last, asked at last meeting, and for those that don't know me, I just got sworn in last week. So I wasn't around. I've been with the village, I know some of the background of things that used to happen. Why hasn't that old contract been found to show when it expired and when it needed renewed? That's got to exist somewhere. Every contract I sign is administrators' and Cheryl's office, regardless of how big, how small. Why can't this be found? Then we'd know when...
The last three years, by the way, we had on.
Well, then I go back to, a lot of this stuff I've heard over the years is, why didn't people ever act upon some of the suggestions, complaints that were made? I wasn't around then. I was just an employee at that part. I, I think there was major things going on, and the council just looked the other way, and...
Looked the other way, but didn't know. I mean, like, I've been on council for like two and a half years, and last year was the first year that we saw these township contracts. Apparently, he was negotiating with the townships without anybody else knowing what he was doing. He was negotiating them and giving them price cuts.
Well, but council, however, if you view those, it's always...
But council should be reviewing those. We shouldn't be voting on these contracts without having them in front of our lips.
That you voted on.
Never fire.
Yeah.
The committee sees them. Not all the council sees them.
Well, maybe that's...
Well, they're in their packets.
Well, like, every year, when we get, we renew the insurance, we see the 40-page document that we all vote on. Like, we should have those in front of us every year, if it's something that we have to vote on. Because everyone should have their eyes on it. It shouldn't be put on one person or two people.
Well, see, out back to that, all the years I handled it, nobody on council ever wanted to see that stuff. They only wanted to know how much was the yearly premium, or whatever.
Well, times have changed, and we want to see the paperwork.
But they trusted me that, okay, this is whatever, and the treasury.
Yeah, but see, in that situation, unfortunately, if something were to happen, you can't, boom. Who knows? Only you know.
No, I had paper copies. This office, I had paper copies.
You want to know it right off the top of your head?
We have to have, like, emergency preparedness, so if something happens, we know where to get the information, and we can pick up the slack.
And I, that's kind of how I did it, and that's how Diane and Cheryl's always done it. You can find the copy of whatever you need. It just boggles my mind we can't find this contract.
I've never been in the medical field. I have never know we had, that we had to have a medical director. I mean, you're in the medical field, I don't know if you knew it. I know she seemed like you have to know, and that's like day one, by like, sounds of it. I guess I rely on department heads. When you got somebody in a head position, you rely on that person to make sure things are done and you're up to date on everything. So to me, it goes to the department head. That's the way I look at it.
Coming past, there was talk about having a criminal investigation on this.
An internal, an internal investigation.
Was that still gonna take place, or?
That was more questions I had, because it sounded like somebody got suspended pending an investigation, but it didn't sound like the mayor's aware of it. Maybe our legal counsel didn't know about it, nobody signed off on it.
Yeah, who?
What information, what was enough evidence, just do this?
Yeah. That's another, whole nother conversation. So who authorized this suspension with pay? Who was the one that authorized it? You authorized it? Do you know that you don't have the power to do that? Do you know it has to go through the mayor?
It has a Friday.
No, I talked to the chief of, right, was it? He called me, it was last week. And we talked about that decision, but I said, I wanted to wait until after tonight's meeting. Because we still had questions and concerns. I wasn't wanting to put fingers at anybody yet until I know the committee meet, the committee had met. It was discussed at the committee meeting that day, right?
Yeah, it said in the notes that we're gonna meet again today, just that wasn't...
And I said, let's, and you guys all talked about it, and I said, we'll get through this meeting, because that way, anybody else had any other questions and answers brought up.
So there is currently an employee that is suspended with pay?
Yeah.
Sure is.
I'm paying that out right now. Like, I didn't...
I found it out this morning.
That's...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
That needs to probably be addressed as well.
Yes, it does.
I didn't know that that... Please.
Well, you can. You got a question?
Yeah.
I don't, I, I, I'm not, I could speak with you privately later about that, because...
Because me and Rachel actually talked, had a conversation.
Mark is my husband, so I was sitting beside him while he had a conversation with you.
Right, that was like at nine o'clock at night, right?
The other night, so I heard the conversation, so I disagree with what you're saying.
I just said, I, I said I listened to him, and I said, I'm not ready to go down that road as a mayor. Until we had other conversations.
You're just saying you didn't, this morning, so you didn't find out until this morning?
I, I didn't.
What he's saying is, he knows that they wanted to do it, by what I'm hearing, but he didn't actually know that they did it until this morning.
Okay.
But they did have the talk.
I did not know until this morning, because I walked over to the fire department this morning and asked...
Well, I wish Mark could be here, but...
I was too. I called Mark today. I talked to him before all this meeting.
Mark had surgery, unfortunately, so...
Right. He's recovering from surgery, and I called him today, and he told me what direction he went with Bruce and him on Friday evening. I just didn't know, I said, I didn't know about it until today.
Mark is trying to protect the village.
Absolutely.
So he's, in the interest of the village, that was his suggestion, was that people involved be placed on administrative leave while the investigation is pending.
So the one that suspended him is one of them that is the department, that department that didn't fulfill through?
Basil, I'm sorry?
The department head that is suspending one of his employees is one of them that is somewhat, I'm not saying pointing fingers at, but is the one, a lot of us think, or the ones I talked to is solely responsible for making sure we have that license.
Are you related to the EMT who got suspended?
There were two people that are, that he suggested put on administrative leave.
I don't know. I wasn't involved in any of that. Were you, were you asking for any advice?
Um, and he spoke to Rachel.
Yeah, Mark did call me the other day, and he just filled me on his thoughts. I mean, obviously, I'm new to this position, so, but I, I mean, I understood where he's coming from. I said I would call the mayor, and I think we did, we had a conversation too, and then you called me this morning as well about the...
True. I thought you suspended him, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I was in the loop. I didn't know anything was a definite, you know, this is gonna happen.
What were the grounds for suspension?
I can't tell you right offhand. Sorry, I can't.
Is there written procedure on how somebody gets suspended?
Do we have access to that? Like, you can't say it because you don't know it, or you can't say it because I'm not allowed to hear it? Is that like, personnel record?
Are you, are you asking, like, that it relates to personnel discipline and wanting to go into executive session for those purposes?
I can, I can go back over and get the paperwork.
So you don't know what the paperwork says, is what you're saying?
People shouldn't be saying it in front of the public. I mean...
Yeah, if it has to do with personnel discipline, I'd highly recommend to go into executive session.
Well, let's finish up any questions that the general public may have before we go into another executive. Anybody else got anything that, I don't want to be the dead horse. I want you to tell me something that's gonna help us.
Is there going to be a formal investigation into how this happened?
That I don't know.
And make sure that it does not happen again?
I do not know that.
Do we look into audit software of some sort to prevent this from happening in the future? Maybe not to this department, but to another, another department?
Well, I think it's back to what Abby was saying about checks and balances. We need to have more than one or two, or even three sets of eyes on that.
Is that Lexi Paul? Are you familiar with as a good system?
I mean, Lexi Paul is just for policies.
Yeah.
Well, first, we need to actually establish the paper side, because we can't do the software side until we have the paper side. So that's gonna be a big goal, I think, of council in the next few weeks, maybe, to get started on this stuff.
You said you had started a plan or had a plan, didn't you, Bruce?
Not for this.
No, not for this.
Not for the hospital.
Yeah, it was, started on a plan for coverage if the hospital...
Oh, okay, that's...
Well, actually, the other day was gonna be an internal investigation, and then the board of some criminal, the sheriff's department would do it then. That's what I heard.
Yep.
Is, is the fire department built the same way as like a police department, where you have, you know, you have your chief, you have your captains, you have your lieutenants, all that kind of stuff? Am I right in saying that? Like, in the future, like, somebody, a captain or lieutenant, you should designate that person in the future, you know? You're responsible for EMS, and you're responsible for all the stuff involved with the EMS, so all of this stuff would fall on them. I don't understand why the village has gone through the EMS. I know there's all kinds of stuff involved with it, but why we don't have an EMS chief or whatever. But to me, it seems like Stacy or somebody who's been on the fire department for a long time, that you're EMS, and then they can work with Abby, they can work with Drew, because even I know as a cop that you have to have a medical director for the EMS. To me, it's the same as if my nurse practitioner has to have a doctor. And if my nurse practitioner doesn't have a doctor, she can't do anything. You know what I mean? In the future, we should have somebody who, your job is EMS, and that's what you do. And maybe not necessarily do the billing or whatever. They should be in charge of EMS, and all the stuff around it. If there's too many hands in the pot at this point, why, and we're adding more hands? It shouldn't be that difficult. The more people we add to the steps, the more stuff. It's just making it more complicated. Make it simpler.
Good point.
Nobody's accountable.
Yeah, when everyone's accountable, no one's accountable. The fact, the fact of what you, what you said earlier...
That's what I mean.
Yep. Someone's gonna have the accountability. Someone's gonna have very clear to find who owns what, right? It's just like...
It's just like one way. You own this, you own this, and set that structure, and then you build the, build the infrastructure underneath that to support it and be able to have documentation, so you're not looking in file folders trying to find a piece of paper or whatever.
But you rely on all your department heads for all that?
Yes.
I mean.
Can't have some, we can't have all these people, it should, and what he said, when everybody's accountable, nobody's accountable, you know what I mean? One for a person, and then, that's it.
Have we self-reported to DEA and Medicaid yet?
Um, we're, we were working on it. I went over there before the meeting, um, and Bruce did call, but we got a voicemail. And so, I actually have the email address for the lady we're supposed to report to, and I will send an email to her, so.
Why does there need to self-report?
Pardon?
Why does there need to self-report?
We're running, not with a contract or anything, and still billing, so wanna not hide anything and self-report to the DEA, as we said.
DEA for the drugs.
Yeah.
Medicare for the billing.
I mean, they did that unknowingly, I mean, it wasn't, they did it on purpose.
Okay, well, does anybody have any further questions? Like, I'm gonna expand a little bit, because that police and fire committee, they did talk about you, you're right, that was brought up here about an investigation. Internal, external levels, I said, and that external, I think, should be handled from an outside department. Um, and internal, I didn't know we were going to that level yet, it was not specified to me, and then I found out it happened later. So, they, they discussed it, chief discussed it with me the night before, and then they discussed, well, at the meeting. So, I just said, being new to council, new to this position, I would like council's input on going that direction with any internal investigation.
That was my understanding at the PFE meeting last week, that was the intention of this meeting.
Yes, that was my intention too.
Was to bring it, to bring it up.
To bring it up and talk about having an investigation, and we haven't talked about it.
Right. So, action was taken before of the night? With the suspension of seven.
Sure, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean that we can't do an investigation.
No, I know that.
Yeah.
But, so I'm, I'm saying. What I'm so fired up about is, we were gonna take a step process.
What I'm fired up about is, this whole thing happened.
Right.
And I think that there needs to be a formal investigation into how that happened.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. But if I, if you were the one, that was the one that everyone thought it was your fault, and you got suspended, how would you feel?
That, that has no bearing on what I'm asking.
That's all singled out.
Yeah.
When there's many hands in the pot.
Again, that has no bearing on what I'm, I'm asking, maybe we do an investigation and exonerate that person. What's happened is happened. I'm just saying, it's time that we look into how this happened, and that there were things involved that, you know, there's processes that where we failed, and we need to acknowledge those. And if, if, if it turns out that it was a failure of ten different people, at least we'll know who it was.
And then it isn't fair, I mean, it is protect that person too, and the other person.
Yes, it is so, because you're keeping them away from anything that could potentially harm them.
It also protects his counsel too.
It is, because it keeps you away from any part of the investigation.
Also protects his counsel too.
Yes.
I mean, because we're all.
It does, because it keeps them away from any of the evidence.
We all live in a small town.
That could exonerate them, or, or point the finger at them. Like, they're not, you can't say, oh, that person messed with that evidence, because they're not anywhere near that evidence. That, that's the whole point of having them away from the evidence.
She's talking about the suspension.
Yes.
My question is, for the, for the minutes we...
That's the purpose of that.
One of the questions I had for the minutes from your guys' PFE meeting last Thursday was always stating that we were having another hourly EMT doing all the conversation and all the contact with all these people, and to me, that should be something the department head should be doing.
Yes.
It shouldn't be another EMT, no offense, Abby, I appreciate you going out and finding me.
Yeah, thank God for you.
It says, all of them says Abby's getting into contact with them, Medicare, Abby's getting a hold of EMS investigator, Abby's doing this, Abby's doing that.
Bruce, that's not her job, she's an hourly, in my eyes, that is not another, that's a coworker, that's a peer. That's a department head type of responsibility.
When you don't know.
That's how you learn.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. And you take over the investigation of a fire department, and you tell me how to run it, and tell me the good, the bad, the ugly of it.
That's why we said you needed assigned an EMS chief that has background in it.
Exactly. I did not have background to this.
This is still taking place, he's still the EMS chief.
I'm just saying, you know, we talked about for the future, but right now, I'm not advocating for Bruce or anything, but you were doing what you thought was best to get answers, and you delegated to Bruce Silcot, Abby, yourself, Drew was a big part of it, making phone calls, getting answers, and direction, bottom line. And you've moved quite far forward here in the last week to get some of those answers, and then bring them either to Bruce or Cheryl or, or those people to get them forward. I asked, you know, they got a hold of Rachel, I said, Rachel needs to be a big part of this, answering questions forward, being our solicitor and attorney, if there's any, you know, liability type of things going on here, she knows to know everything about this too. So, we've had conversations about meeting up with you guys and talking to you while these questions and answers are being addressed, so. But, I kind, I'm just saying, I kinda see why Bruce didn't answer those questions, I don't know if he had the answers or questions for the right departments not being, you know?
And I get your guys' point of view, but you also have to understand that you hired him for a fire and EMS chief.
Yeah.
It's not just on him.
Right.
Correct.
Because you were saying now that he needs to have all this EMS stuff done, but you knew that he had no EMS knowledge.
Doesn't mean he can't appoint one.
Right, but I'm saying, I mean.
He's been, he's been in six months.
And I think when we talked about that, we all agreed that maybe this, right this second, is not the best time to appoint that person.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I think we had that conversation.
Why is that?
Well, you'll figure it out.
Oh.
Rachel, do you have any input? I mean, do we need to go into executive session now for any other questions and answers with protocol and, or?
I think I got questions about the rest of this.
No, but I'd like you to do it.
Well, I've got some questions.
Well, let's hear them.
Well, okay. I talked to Cheryl this morning, the outsourcing of billing. Village tried that years back.
Yep.
And council voted to get rid of it, because we were losing money.
Yep.
Why do we wanna go back to that?
I, I'm in favor of outsourcing billing, I have been since I've been on police, fire, and EMS, and mainly because coming from a medical background, I see how it works in the medical field. I would like for us to try it once. If the village breaks even, I say that's a win. There are people that literally go to school, and that's all they do, is medical coding. In fact, we have, and I've worked in the OR for thirteen years, three times in that thirteen years, we have had to change the name of procedure three different times, so that it could be coded correctly, so that we could get reimbursement on it. I just think that asking someone who doesn't have that background to do that coding for us, isn't fair to him, and it's not fair to us. In the end, if the village doesn't end up making, breaking even at least, then I can understand us stepping away. But I think without looking into it, and I know that I've talked with some of the EMS, that's pretty much standard protocol in all the towns around us. They're almost, all of them are outsourcing that.
We did shoot it down.
And they're missing out on charges, too.
Well, no, and I understand that from the hospital.
Well, we didn't shoot it down, we had actually asked Kramer if he could get a hold of the company and give them a list of all of our runs, and see what he could find, like, here's the whole six months or three months of billing that we did internally, and what did they find difference? I mean, were we way off? Could we, we billed for ten thousand, could we have got fifty thousand? And we asked that, and the company never came. They never came, they never researched, they never looked over any of the month's bills or how they were billed.
That's why you got an account to do your taxes, you just don't go with your state because somebody knows what they're doing.
That's where I'm not anti-looking at it, but that's gonna be ten to fifteen thousand less going into your budget.
Well, I mean, that is such a rough number.
Unless we're capturing ten, fifteen thousand dollars.
It's five to seven percent, so they just gave us a rough number.
Right, and that was one company, and I know Abby has done a lot of work with that, I mean, she was going to get in contact with three, I don't know if you ended up getting a hold of the other two, but, um, you know, she's put in a lot of footwork to try to find something that works for us.
I think that also takes the liability off of people, which I think that is smart, like, now it's not just one person who's to blame for certain things. It takes that away from putting someone in a bad position.
I just remember when I was sitting here, and council looked at what they were spending on billing, there was grumbling, so I, so I'm not against looking into that, but is the council, uh, doesn't have amnesia someday? I saw a lot of that in twenty-two years, I'm sorry. The purchasing of the supplies, that twenty-four thousand, is that something that can wait till we know more on the hospital? Or is that already been?
You're, you're gonna be looking at, like, for a...
To gear up that other ambulance.
Yeah, for, for the CPR device, the Lucas device, I'm pretty sure there's a six-month lead time, if not more.
Everything else, yes, we need before we get an inspection done.
Yeah. So, the twenty-thousand-dollar CPR device, and I'm looking for grants, but grants are very confusing and hard, so.
Well, didn't we have more, there was, there was more money, because, because that one, the device you're speaking of, that was twenty thousand in itself.
Yeah.
Weren't, weren't we closer to, I'm thinking like forty or something that we figured?
Because of the modem, uh, two modems they need, um...
Yeah, and we have to have those.
Yeah, so we're gonna be closer to forty, actually, than, than the twenty-four that you're thinking.
Well, I guess nobody, yeah, I never read that.
I thought the forty included the, um, possible ten for...
No, I don't think so.
Um, yeah.
Did it?
The list, the list was, was around twenty-five with the unit.
Yeah.
The Lucas in it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, forty with the Lucas.
So, the forty-five was with the Lucas, but the Lucas being the majority, but even about twenty thousand of that. So, about four to five thousand to mirror the two ambulances.
But the Lucas is not something that we have to have, right?
Correct.
That is not something that we have to have.
It's something that we can get grants to try to get.
Yes, but the modem and all the rest of that is something that we have to.
We gotta have the modem, um...
The tablets.
We need the hotspots and the modems. So, the modems allow the Lucas device, or the, they are Lucas, but they allow the life packs to talk to the internet, so we need those, and then we need the hotspot to provide the internet.
Yeah.
And then we need the tablets for the EMTs, because everything's switching over to ESO, and that's gonna get rid of paper.
So, that's, that's more like four to five thousand.
Well, so, is that stuff you need?
Yes, medical director says we have to have it.
Or is that, you need it regardless of what happens?
Need it regardless of what happens in the hospital.
Okay, well, you're gonna be back there.
Yeah, we need it, we need it now.
I know budget's a bad word, but I don't think you're getting any money till what, into March?
But, I mean, if you want our...
Well, if we have to, we can transfer, if we have to.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to get compliant, so I don't know what else to say, that we're, we're behind, we need to get back ahead.
And we had, we had money out of general fund for pool, and we don't not do in the pool, so, I mean, we gotta get them going, we gotta get them going, we gotta get them stopped.
And what we need, the amount of money that we need today to be good to go is less than five thousand dollars.
Yes.
No, that's fine.
Can we make a motion to pay this, so we get it?
Yeah.
Yes.
I second your vote.
You need to make the EMS office compliant.
Well, can you make a bill or a quote or something? Okay, well, no, that's fine, I hate it when...
You have, you have what he's just requested in writing?
And is it about, except for the hotspots, but I think I didn't hear that.
All right.
And we thought maybe the tablets we could get for free.
Well, yeah, I wanna make sure that it's on record that we said we could get it.
No, shots, we thought we could get it as free, and we can't.
There's a ma, there's a motion on the floor, been seconded, um, for purchasing medical supplies and to comply.
To get the department into compliance.
I made the first, he made the second.
Roll call.
Essam?
Yes.
Everly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Egley? Yes.
And I guess the last little note I had to myself, and this kinda goes back to what was touched on, who gets purchase orders for the police, not police, for the fire EMS? Can anybody just walk over and get a PO from Cheryl, or is it gotta be the chief? Because that would clear up a lot of how this get bought, or where we spend the money.
My understanding is John was doing all that.
Okay, was, who is doing it now?
Or who can do it?
If you need something tomorrow, who's gonna give you?
I believe it's a department head or their designee.
Bruce is probably my, my last kid, is.
But just generally speaking, if Cory asked Bob to take a PO to you, you can't do that?
I can, but he doesn't.
He usually doesn't, okay.
No, I would, I would do that on occasion, where if I couldn't get down here, I'd send Jimmy or whatever.
But you know it's, it could be their designee.
Call it or send it me.
Right, it's not, you show up and say, I need twenty thousand dollars. If Bruce is out of commission, but he knows that something needs to, a PO needs to go through, he can designate somebody.
Yes, and I will care of that, but in the past, hasn't been if anybody over there wanted to come get a PO, they could do it. Okay, I just wanna clear some of that up, because I've heard differing stories about that. I'm glad it's wrong.
Then you should be did it.
No, that's why I also brought it up. There's a lot of gray areas when it would come to spending money over there.
Correct. Uh, I kinda just wanna...
You wanna, they asked you to stand, I know a lot of these, go ahead, real loud, say You wanna, they asked you to stand, I know a lot of people, go ahead, roll out, say it loud.
Earlier, Charlie said, a department head couldn't suspend somebody, right, without pay or some admin suspension, that kinda thing. But like with us, if, if I go out and get an officer involved shooting, I'm getting suspended right away, you know what I mean? And it's, it's to protect me and it's, it's all this other stuff. So, I mean, are we sure that the department head can't do that?
I was looking in the manual, I couldn't find any things, without knowing on paper what our policy is.
Because it is our policy from Lexi- that, you know, if I go do something like that, I'm suspended.
I don't know, I have a whole adage. So, what I was seeing on the computer when I hung over there the other day, he can do that. But, Hicksville might have a whole different set of stuff, but what the state says that our municipality can do, he can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I'm not an attorney, I've played one before.
Any other place a department head can suspend.
Sure.
Yeah.
I feel like the council has kinda put it on him, in the last few meetings that we've had. They've kinda come back to him, and he said, well, you know, you guys need to do this, and you guys said, "No, you need to do this, this is your person, you need to take care of it." I feel like that has gone on a bit in the last few meetings. Just my two cents.
But if we're looking at multiple people, I don't see why there's only one suspended.
Well, yeah, before then, thank you.
That's his house?
That's his house.
This is your house. We take care of our house, you take care of your house.
It was suggested to both people.
That is, that is how it was put, maybe not in those exact words, forgive me, but that's kinda how, that was the vibe that we got, you know, or that I, that I picked up in the last couple of meetings, was like, well, no, this isn't, this isn't our job to make sure that your employees are following the rules, it's your job to make sure your employees are following the rules.
I don't have any employees, they won't let me fire nobody.
That's because they're smart.
Okay, so when you're administrator, if you were to suspend somebody, do you have to get a locate by council, or could you do it?
There's an outline I would have followed, I don't know if that applies to police and fire and the things of them. There's, there's steps outlined in our policy, but.
You can't suspend police or fire, can you?
No, that's why I said.
You said in his part.
Yeah, when he was administrator, he had to take the blessing from you guys to.
Nope, the same thing or not.
Really, it's an at-will state.
Well, there again, shouldn't there be a fire, fire EMS policy book you guys updated every year?
Yeah, we have a handbook.
Shouldn't there be something in there about how you had to handle discipline? I don't know, I've never seen one.
It's in there, but.
What is it called, Lexa?
We're not, we're not doing, we're, only police is doing Lexi-.
There is one for the fire department, the policies and procedures and how they deal with that.
Where's that at?
It's, we have it, we'd have to get your help.
Can you share it with council at some point, somebody, please?
But legally, Ohio's an at-will state, so.
Can you share that policy with us?
No, no, but, no, I'm just saying, Ohio isn't an at-will state, so even if you wanted to fire somebody, you don't even have to have a reason.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's in our legal online, it's online.
Police and fire chiefs, you have to have.
Our, all of our rules, our bylaws, everything's all online, it's public.
Could you share that with me?
It's wherever the Hicksville ordinances are, on the internet, the legal ED, whatever. It's, our stuff's on there too.
Is it?
Yes.
Fire department and EMS are on that site?
Yes, sir.
Do you say why?
Why?
Well, we, we don't know.
We're hoping to find out a little bit more.
We'll have to go into executive session to get that answer, unfortunately.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions?
I, I did have one thing real quick. I know, this, this whole situation is.
Come in.
This whole situation is a big fat egg on everything, you know, you're a new mayor, Harsh's new chief. I just wanted to point out that we did appoint a new fire chief, not that long ago. And we did have other candidates that had fire and EMS backgrounds that did not get hired. I just wanted to point that out.
I mean, there's more to, to the story.
I know, but I'm just saying.
I understand, but.
We had, you know, I understand Bruce didn't know, but I just wanted to make it clear, we did have other candidates that are both, were on both sides of the fence.
Wait, I mean, do you know if they were offered the position and if they turned it down?
I, I don't believe that they were all, all for, you know, if they were offered or not, so.
I mean, there's, there's definitely more to that story.
Okay, well, I just wanted to let you guys know that we did have other opportunities, so.
You're saying, is it our fault because we hurt Bruce?
No, no, I'm not saying that, I just wanted to point that out, you know, because we did have some other options, and some people did, from what I understand, back out because they felt like it was gonna push somebody else out. So, you know, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And it's not to say the new, the other new person would have known either, because they were just put in, you know, Bruce was just put in. So like, you know, honestly, I, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we did have some other options.
There's always options.
Thank you. Anything else?
Anybody?
Mark?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session regarding personnel.
Thank you all, thank you for everything you've commented and said.
Not just personnel.
Personnel matters, I don't know, whatever it says on the.
Fire EMS.
I'll second that.
Whatever my lawyer says.
That's a good way to be. Whatever the lawyer says.
Thanks, everybody, for coming, and we're still working hard to get to the bottom of this. But thanks to the EMTs and everybody for everything, I know you guys are going above and beyond right now, and I, I appreciate it, I think everybody else appreciates it, so.
Most definitely.
Mike, I would like to say just one thing.
Yes, sir.
If you have fire and EMS, I know everybody doesn't know me, but I got 58 years in the fire service. To be an EMS chief of a department, it has to be so stated, otherwise it's fire and EMS, the chief is the sole responsibility.
Thank you.
Yeah, I use your tires.
Okay, well, all, you have to excuse us.
Do all.
We're going to be taking a session.